Good evening, everybody. We're going to go ahead and get started. Got that. Okay. Welcome to the... Sorry, there's a little feedback.
It's me. Sorry. Stand by.
Testing? All right. Welcome to the February 24th, 2025 Regular City Commission Meeting, starting at 6 o'clock PM. Real quick, before we get to the rest of the agenda, one quick announcement you might have noticed in the back of the room. There's an additional piece of paper there. It is the open meeting and public comment policy. We had a lot of questions about this, so we wanted to put that back there for you if you wanted to see what that was all about. Couple of the highlights. Everybody does get up to three minutes to speak. You only get one opportunity to use that time to speak. If you agree with a comment that has already been made, you can voice your agreement with that comment, or you can also elect a spokesperson to speak on a certain point. Also, public comment is not meant to be a back-and-forth discussion. Address your questions to the City Commission, not to any speakers, presenters, or other audience members, public people. So also, just keep in mind that comments are to be respectful. So if you have any questions, see the piece of paper that's in the back of the room next to the agenda. Now that we went over that, let's move to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That moves us along to approval of the agenda. What is the pleasure of the Commission?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
All right, Abby, call the roll.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Binkley?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorolla?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Ree?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
All right, now for public comment. This is items that are on the consent agenda or not on our agenda. And again, please limit your comments to three minutes. And if you could come up to the mic, state your name and address. Please.
My first time attending. My name is... My name is Marlene Sarnicky. My address is 910 Price Street, St. Joe. And I'm here to get some guidance as to getting a response from the Commission regarding an expense of almost $900. I've talked to a couple of you already, and I'm wondering what's happening. So I don't know how to get a response.
Public comment is... You're not going to get a response right now, but we will take your comments down, and we can either get with you afterwards, or if you want to email some of us some of the questions that you have, we can...
I've done all that already.
Okay.
So what do I do next?
The issue is related to an incident that occurred on Niles. I've been in touch with Marlene, and I'm happy to fill in the Commission and follow up with you, Marlene. I apologize for the delay.
Okay, so you'll do that?
Yeah.
And then Michael, I think?
My response would be that Emily's going to get ahold of you as far as first specific guidance.
Okay, because it's over a month and a half. And anyway, this incident happened last April, so... And I'm $900 out of pocket for something that wasn't my fault. Okay?
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment? Please.
Good evening. My name is Gloria Mans. I live in St. Joe. I have a complaint, which I don't think anything would happen about it. And I think it's something seriously that we need to have done in the city. Once the weather gets to be nice, I think we should take some money and fix the streets in St. Joe. They're horrendous. They're holy. There're holes. The bricks, they're starting to sink again. But the streets downtown are horrible. And if you want to know, get somebody out there to walk up and down, or drive down and see about all the potholes that are in the streets. And you should be ashamed of yourself that you're not taking care of that. For the people that live here pay taxes, and you want people to come? Well, I wouldn't want them to see those streets. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right. That moves us along to the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda include regular meeting minutes of Monday, February 3rd, 2025, Whirlpool, Centennial Park, HVAC, and Fountain Controls, seasonal vendor applications, professional services attorney stand-in, 2024 Planning Commission Annual Report, special event application Alex's Duck Duck Run, special event application Rock the Boat, Cardboard Boat Races, special event Walk to End Alzheimer's, fiscal year '25 budget amendments, and invoice and tax dispersments. What is the pleasure of the Commission?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I support.
All right, Abby, call the roll.
Commissioner Binkley?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorolla?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Ree?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
All right, on to item number 14, Quick Claim Deed, Grave Street Right-of-Way.
Thank you. You may remember last year, there was a project AEP had requested an easement from the city for across the parcel down by Whirlpool and Upton Drive. It turned out that there was a question over ownership, whether that was a city property or whether Whirlpool owned it. So there was a lot of research done, and it turns out that it actually was vacated and abandoned in 1997. However, due to a variety of factors, that never was recorded with the Register of Deeds Office completely. So it remained on the city records as being city-owned, county records as being city-owned. So basically, in order to bring those records up to date, we needed to record the minutes where the vacation took place. So that was actually done in December. Abby, our clerk, signed an affidavit attesting to the minutes of 1997 in which the vacation occurred. We had discrepancies in the legal description, which was also addressed in the affidavit. That was all recorded at the end of December, so that the vacation that took place in 1997 is officially recorded with the Register of Deeds Office. I've been in touch with people at Whirlpool to make sure that they were comfortable with how we were addressing the property transfer that already occurred. They had requested a quick claim deed to kind of... Kind of a belt-and-suspender's approach to make sure that if there was any potential interest the city retained, that that quick claim deed would convey that to Whirlpool. So what is presented for you tonight is a quick claim deed that would clarify any potential question that might come up.
Thank you. Okay. Any questions?
No.
All right. Seems pretty straightforward. It was very detailed in the packet. Thank you for that explanation. So what is the pleasure of the Commission?
I move to approve the quick claim deed conveying to Whirlpool Corporation any interest of the city, any interest the city has in Lot 5 Edgewater addition to the City of St. Joseph, formerly known as Grave Street Right-of-Way, running easterly of Upton Drive and located within Section 14 of the City of St. Joseph, having a tax identification number of 11-76-1900-005-003 as presented.
Support. Any public comment on the matter? All right, Abby, call the roll.
Commissioner Sorolla?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Ree?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Binkley?
Yes.
Thank you. Item number 15, Silver Beach Work Group Update.
So I will kick this off. Hopefully, the presentation comes up, and I'm going to present it jointly with County Administrator Brian Desette. He is... Do you want to go up to the podium? He is standing in tonight for Jill Adams, who is out sick, unfortunately. As we talked about in our last meeting, just before our last meeting, we had kicked off a working group to focus on how to handle traffic below the bluff this summer. We have been working really closely with Jill and her team, with Sheriff Height under Sheriff Sanders, and a great team from the city, Assistant City Manager Zabel, Chief Newbecker, and Public Works Director Greg Grouthouse, who maybe is in the back, and I'm too short to see him, even though he's the tallest person in the room. So we have made some really great progress. I think I'll start, Brian, if it's okay, by just sort of doing an overview of what we are thinking about for 2025. And then I think Brian probably has some things to chime in on related to just the county as well. You know, and this is all, of course, related to the next agenda item about the PUD request for the concessionaire. So what you can see on your screen here, and I can zoom in if it's helpful, is what we are thinking about for this summer. Any folks on the work group, please feel free to chime in if I've got any of this wrong. But what we're thinking about doing is turning Broad Street, Lower Broad, into a one-way street with two lanes. As we all know, we get a lot of congestion and a lot of backup because of all of the demand for Silver Beach parking. And so one of the things that we've been thinking about is rather than having vehicles stack up in one lane all the way down Broad and even around the corner at times, we would have two lanes that would be used to sort of move vehicles. The north side is a lane that sort of lines up directly with the entrance to Silver Beach. The left lane, closer to the fountain, is a lane that would be for left-turn movements. So anyone who is trying to drive down there but not go to Silver Beach ideally does not get stuck in that congestion. There's a way to move past Silver Beach easily. We would have the traffic that is going north coming up Lake Street stop at Market and be required to make a right, going back towards the fountain and coming around. We think that that flow will help the vehicular congestion. Really important, though, and a focus that I don't think has been worked through as aggressively previously, is also a focus on pedestrian traffic and pedestrian flow. So one of the things, as I understand it, is, you know, you've got pedestrians coming from the parking lot, you've got pedestrians coming from the beach, you've got pedestrians coming from the carousel and the fountain, and from all of the wonderful activities below the bluff, and they will walk in front of cars all the time without maybe a lot of thought. And so it adds to this congestion. And so one of the things that we are focused on doing, and these are the blue and white arrows, is we are focused on moving the pedestrian traffic to the north sidewalk, the sidewalk that goes along the carousel. So coming out of Silver Beach, you would walk along the north to the carousel and then turn into the fountain, for instance. Or you would do the same thing in reverse, of course, going back to the parking lot or to the beach. The other thing that is of note is that you'll see at the fountain, we will have a new sidewalk coming off of the fountain sort of at an angle to the moving, I guess that's southwest. And that will also be an opportunity to move pedestrians in a very focused way over to the beach and the beach lot in either direction. We... You can see here on the map that we are proposing covering up that south sidewalk that runs along Broad Street and runs along the parking lot with sand or other things, so that those sidewalks literally go away. Tim can speak to it better than I can, but we're picturing sort of creating dunes. This isn't just about walking through a little bit of sand. This is about really like landscaping and creating barriers that prevent folks from walking in those areas to reduce the congestion in those areas. The other things we want to do is paint, you know, beautiful crosswalks is the word, to really call out, this is where we want you to cross pedestrians. And we think that by doing that, it will make the traffic, vehicular and pedestrian, much easier to control. Brian, do you want to talk a little bit about the county's portion of this?
To the City Commission, to...
Oh, you're muted. Hold on.
Nope.
Go ahead. Sorry. My fault.
Number one, thank you for having me here. And with sincerity, the amount of effort that the city has poured through its staff into trying to find a better solution is very much appreciated. It is very much noted. On behalf of the work group, I can tell you that the county's team from the Parks Department, as well as from the Sheriff's Office, has been actively engaged at the table and trying to work with your team to find a better way to move vehicles and pedestrians through this area. So your city manager noted that you've got a very busy intersection. Just from the study that was conducted using Walker on behalf of the county, Crassel Weekend last year, that intersection saw, on our study, 7,373 pedestrians moving through that intersection, just a massive number of people. What I personally have observed is, without the help of your Public Safety Department, that intersection is already difficult. Without those officers guiding traffic, it would be nearly impossible to safely move through the intersection. I think that the plan that you're looking at is a big improvement to try and ensure that there is a high degree of safety and just a more logical way for pedestrians to move through the area and get to the beach. With that said, as you look at the city's portion of the plan and cross into the county park, you'll see that we would be taking similar steps, also using sand to cover existing sidewalks. We would be actively working to encourage the pedestrians to use existing sidewalks and then moving into the parking lot where we would have to add some additional sidewalks as well as signage to ensure that pedestrians are flowing in a reasonable and safe way to get to the beach. What's not seen on this drawing but is absolutely the county's plan is the lane extension. We are very much committed. We have been working through the design process. We'll be fast-moving into the bidding process, whoever is controlling that screen. You can see on this drawing that there is absolutely a commitment to extend the lane to ensure that we are taking payments in a very orderly and multifaceted way. So that lane, as you look at it, our current estimate indicates that the second lane will allow an additional 15 vehicles to stack, and just hopefully you'll see a reduction in the total queue of vehicles that are stacking onto the public street network. One of the questions that has come up in the past is, how fast are we moving vehicles through? This is something that has really been a point of pride with the county's team. They are aggressively moving vehicles through in a timely manner. By the study that we have had conducted, our average length of time is about 12 seconds per interaction. Now, I know that that average, that there are going to be examples where we are very, very fast, I also know that we are going to have from time to time through the use of people paying with cash or card. However, the overall study has shown that we are quick. We're averaging about 12 seconds. The other thing that's really of note is that we are averaging about 50/50 on credit card versus cash payments. It's something that we have an absolute massive number of people going through those gates. And despite my own personal bias, I pay for just about everything with plastic. The bulk of the people going to the beach unfortunately don't share my passion for not carrying around cash. About 50% of our guests are using cash instead of credit cards. With that said, we are at the table. We are trying really hard to work with your staff and listen to some of the complaints coming from your residents. We recognize that this is something that has dragged on. We recognize that we are trying to be a good partner to the city and to the residents, trying to find ways to make this flow better for both vehicles, but really high focus on making sure that it is a safe intersection for pedestrians, and that through maximizing the safety, we're also maximizing the efficiency of the intersection. I can go on and on, but I'll pause there and answer questions.
One of the things I like about this partnership, and I can't speak for the rest of the team, but I think at least the city team shares this, is we're collaborating on this together, right? This challenge is lives partially inside the park and lives partially at the approach to the park. And this is a solution that attacks both.
I would like to just offer one quick statement. As we've worked on this over the last couple of years, I've had individual members of the county board just asking the question of, boy, it sure seems like the county's being asked to fix everything, and we can point to the city's street network and point to a boulevard that seems to be a major impediment. Having this plan in front of the public and recognizing that the city's willing to take the steps of directing both lanes of traffic to be westbound, that is an absolute sign of good faith. It's something that I know is going to be difficult. I know that it's going to create some complaints as the public gets used to change. But from the county's perspective, that is something that, speaking candidly, we didn't think would come, and it is very much appreciated and noted that that is a major part of the solution. So with that said, I will answer any questions that the electeds have for me, or attempt to.
I have a few.
Go ahead.
I wasn't here last time, so I just want to make sure that I understand this correctly. I do think we always have had goodwill, but we'll continue to have goodwill. The two lanes, the two full lanes coming in, there will be two pay stations there?
So we have the one pay station. We also have workers that are able to step outside of the pay station, accept payment. So yes, on the days where there is a significant number of people going to the beach, we'll be ready to take payments in both the existing lane as well as the lane that will be extended.
Okay, so somebody will always be on hand to do that?
I am not going to say someone will always be on hand. I will tell you that we will make every effort to ensure that we are, on those peak days, operating in a way that is absolutely focused on efficiency.
And I know, even if you get them through very, very quickly, which I appreciate that you do that, obviously, there's still backup. We're hoping this will help with this. I know one of the things that Walker recommended, would you install signage that would better inform visitors that are approaching the park about the current conditions and guide them through the flow, whether to just keep moving or to get them into the parking lot or...
Yeah, so one of the things that came from the Walker report that I really found to be an interesting suggestion is not focused on metering or how cash is exchanged, but on essentially a higher-tech sign program, so that at the top of bluff, if the county's lot is full, or potentially the city lots are full, that there would be some type of digital announcement that if you come down the hill, you're not going to find parking. That's something that we are not ready to fund. We are not ready to implement. However, we have a growing degree of interest in that. And it's something that I hope that we can continue through this work group, trying to find a way that if we make that investment, that it is done in conjunction so that the city lots are part of that solution. We are not, I am not committing that that will occur in the immediate future. I am absolutely saying that, out of that study, we recognize that that solution could be very beneficial, and it is something that is being actively looked at.
And then lastly, I guess I would like to say, if the committee continues to meet, or the two people continue to meet, I would like to have dates when they're meeting, or at least generally know when you're going to meet, and to really have a set date, maybe in July or August, to look at how it's going, and commit to implementing these other ideas that you paid Walker to tell you to do.
So I understand...
Maybe that's a good segue to the... Great.
I absolutely understand and appreciate what you're saying. I am in no way committing to major capital outlays. I work for a board of 12. The board of 12 ultimately will have the decision-making. Please understand that while the county has a great degree of pride in its park system, we also are very aware of the cost to get into the parks, and we very much take pride in the fact that we keep those rates very reasonable. As a result, this is a situation where we do not have a massive fund balance to pour money into signs or meters. We, every year, are managing a relatively small fund balance and making sure that we have enough funding for all of our staff, as well as have the ability to keep water, the sewer flowing at the other public facilities. So this is one that I say to you is, on behalf of the county, we are here in good faith. We're absolutely working through the list of recommendations from Walker. However, to commit to coming in July and laying out a plan to further implement suggestions from the Walker report, I cannot make that commitment to, other than to say, we will happily continue working with the city, happily continue working with the committee, and as the funding permits, we will actively look at adding additional improvements to the park.
Since I gave you all those questions, I do want to say that we, I want to say we appreciate the fact that we've asked and ask for you guys to meet with us, and you have. You hired and paid money for a parking consultant. You're meeting quite often with the staff here. You're changing the way that you're doing the lanes. So I appreciate the steps that you're taking.
Thank you.
I wanted to ask, I've heard the term "safety" thrown out a lot during the presentation, and I know that's a big concern from residents, is safety as far as, you know, if there was an emergency in the homes or in the condos where an ambulance or fire truck or some emergency vehicle needed to get in, there's that barrier of the traffic blocked up. Can we hear from both public safety sides on an opinion on that front?
Madam Mayor, it is your meeting. I will happily defer the folks on public safety. You got it.
So with the two lanes going down Broad Street, we can certainly get an emergency vehicle in the turn lane that crosses over, it can get into the beach, or coming down, if we go back to that slide.
This one?
Or coming down Lake Street, we can go the wrong way right there to get emergency personnel into the beach. So it's going to make it a ton safer for medical personnel to get to the beach, which that area, if somebody needs them.
So this plan is an improvement from a safety aspect, in your opinion?
That is a huge improvement from what we were doing.
Great. Thank you.
What about into the condos?
Definitely be able to get into the condos, because they can go the wrong way down that one-way at Elm Street and just cross over.
Anything in... Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Anything in addition from county standpoint on public safety, or does that kind of cover it? Okay, wonderful. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
So I think one of the things I'm most optimistic about with this plan is rerouting to pedestrians, which I have experienced firsthand many, many times, is probably the thing that slows down progress on that corner of Lake and Lower Broad more than anything. That particular cross, which is on the very north side of Lake, right before you turn onto Broad, there's oftentimes when a string of people will start walking, and the pedestrians, they have the right of way. They're often carrying coolers, or kids, or beach chairs, or all of the above, and it could take, it could be 90, 120 seconds of no traffic movement. So I think that's going to be a major change, and we're going to see the benefit of it right away. I think going to a one-way on Lower Broad has a lot of merit. One of my concerns, and I've shared it with staff, is, you know, we have a very vibrant business on the corner of Vine and Lower Broad, and if we go one-way on Lower Broad, there's only one entrance into Silver Beach Pizza, which means we need to make abundantly sure that any backups that occur are limited to only Lower Broad. If they start to wrap around on Divine, now you have the inability to get into a parking lot. You can't come in from another direction. It's bound by the railroad track on the one side, and now we have a one-way on Lower Broad. So, you know, I would like to ask, you know, none of the commissioners have been in these conversations with the county. There's been a lot of communication from our team, and I'm really grateful for that. But I would just like to reaffirm, I think Greg, Tim, Steve, and Emily, all in those meetings, do you feel confident that the measures we've put in place are, is going to mitigate any backup on Divine, other than the most extreme situations, which would then prompt public safety officers to maybe get more involved on that corner and make sure that we're ushering traffic through quickly?
We are definitely going to be there. This is a pilot program. We're going to try it out. You got to remember, in the county study, one out of every three vehicles below the hill was turning left from Broad onto Lake Street, which backed it up completely, along with trying to get traffic into Silver Beach, and they were backed up to there. So we had a ton of cars trying to turn in that lane that we're unable to. We're going to have reserves on staff. We're going to have an officer stationed down there at the beginning to make sure this works successfully.
Okay.
And I'm 100% certain we're going to get it to work.
Greg, would you feel comfortable in echoing that?
Yeah, I would agree. You know, we tried it in 18 and 19, and pedestrians were the holdup. The movement of pedestrian traffic out of that intersection.
Tim, you probably have more experience in your life with traffic flow than any of us. Tim, you probably have more experience in your life with the, with traffic flow than any of us. What's your thought on this?
I agree. I think it's going to be an improvement as Steve's suggestions. If we adjust and we can adjust and take care of any concerns.
I will add, one of the things that I thought was really wise when we were talking, I think credit to Steve for coming up with this and to Jill and her team for being open to it. You know, the, the parking lot fills up, right? Jill talked a lot about, we open it up in the morning and within three hours it's full. And one of the things that, to the best of my knowledge, we have not done routinely in the past, but was proposed is let's put up barricades. When that lot fills up, let's put up barricades. And with two lanes, let's just move everyone. They have to turn left. So there's not going to be queuing all the way down the street and around the block while people wait for a space. We're going to put up barricades. We're going to move traffic along. Jill has talked about, you know, when 25 spots open up, we reopen. And you're not going to have 25 cars queued up. The first 25 that roll in at that time will get a space. And I thought that was a really wise way to ensure that as it's backing up, we can move it along and prevent what you're describing.
Operationally, would that be triggered by the county? Will you put up the barricades or will the city or just?
We've, we've worked together on this now for the past five years. So we work in combination.
Okay, one other, don't leave, Steve. One other question I have for you.
Brian.
When we implemented this before, it was a one-way on Lake Street. So it's a little bit different. But one of the, one of the byproduct issues that came from that was as you're going south on Lake and then up Park, you've got that, that hill and a stop sign, not a light.
Correct.
How are we going to prevent traffic backups on that hill? And maybe starting to bleed into that Lions Park neighborhood?
So we do have hockey pucks installed. Tim had them installed back in 2017. Whether she'll get the traffic to turn right, we can also put delineators out there to make sure people do turn right. Tim's going to mark all that in case we have an issue there. We can also go back to blocking Lake Boulevard if it becomes too big of an issue.
Okay.
Like we did that.
Okay.
And we are going to start simple and get more complicated. And when you go back a couple of slides, you'll see initially what we want to do.
This one?
That one. It shows, I don't know if you can zoom in at Park and Lake Boulevard there.
Uh huh.
The initial thought is we put a sandwich board up there. That sign, we can either go manually or have it use the, basically a signal detection where it'll tell cars are backing up. They're on a certain period of time, just automatically start flashing.
Okay.
But if that doesn't work with a reserve officer up there directing traffic, we can't keep cars moving, then we can go to more restrictive. You know, we use grabber cones here. I prefer to use the delineator posts. I think we could do that in a more efficient and so on aesthetically pleasing way than what was done in the past.
Okay.
So again, we've got an initial plan and we've got a backup plan if things don't go smoothly.
Okay.
The pedestrian traffic at Broad and Lake was a huge concern.
Yeah, for sure. I think that's going to be a big game changer.
So do I.
Emily, can you go back to the, the overhead Broad and by, or Broad and Lake? This question is for you, Brian.
Yep.
So, you know, we're, we're removing, we're removing all this pedestrian traffic here, which is going to be a big help. But we still are, now we're going to have a left turn lane. So there's going to be a good volume here and we're going to have a good volume exiting the park. So there's going to be periods of time where that gets overwhelmed. Is the county open to, only as an egress, not as an entrance, opening up this, the southern exit?
Yes, so I've got Jason's head in the back nodding up and down. The answer, put simply and as clearly as possible, is yes. We can get that open and get the other vehicles out and hopefully protect what we're trying to do in that intersection.
Yeah, that'll certainly help the flow along Lake and then ultimately up Park as well.
Yep.
Okay, and then I have one more point to make. It's clear to me that the collaboration between the city and the county is at an all-time high that I've heard of for about 20 years I've been hearing about this issue. I think we have the ball rolling in the right direction. And I think one of the things that made that happen was we kind of had to look within as the city and just stop entirely pointing the finger at the county. There are things we can do to help ourselves. And a lot of these solutions tonight are just those things. But I think there's one more that we have to do. So right now, we've got the center islands on Lower Broad, which were probably a good idea at one time. But we don't robustly plant them with anything beautiful. Some of them is tall grasses. You have kids crossing in those areas. It, it, it makes it difficult to see them. I think we could do ourselves a great service by removing those. Having two lanes going west on Lower Broad, that opens up the lane going east. So we don't have to have a one-way. That makes that a one-year proposition. And I propose that we put it in the budget for spring of 2026 or even fall 2025. Probably not going to happen in '25, but I think it's important we get that out of there. Would you have just a guess, Tim, just a guess of what kind of time and cost would be involved in that?
Well, I'm not a fan of it simply because I told Emily this story. When I first started at the city, I walked in the door, I go, Road and Bridges, Mary, see, they actually get a shot of that boulevard complimenting on how nice it looks leading to the beach. Now, that's not so much why I'm not a fan of it. If you drive down there, you'll see decorative lights on the center median. It's not only the cheap project. I mean, I think right now in today's construction dollars, you're starting at a quarter million dollars and going up from there.
Okay.
So certainly we can do it.
Okay.
But, you know, we don't have a road in the, in the city. I'd like to avoid doing that, but certainly we can.
Yeah, and I, I'm looking at functionality over aesthetics and the volume of traffic we have to move through there, as, as great as they are, I think we have to give it strong consideration. And some, again, I'm, I'm just challenging the city staff to look at this and see what's the benefit. So we don't have to go to a one-way on Broad for eternity. I just think that's, that's a difficult situation. It's a difficult situation for one primary business on that corner. And it, it, it then, it then is, is less likely that we're going to see backups in Divine.
And we can see how it goes.
Yeah.
I just implement what you tell me to do.
Yeah.
See how it goes.
Yeah, I think a lot of this stuff, you know, we talked about potentially a meeting in June or July. And I appreciate, Brian, that you can't necessarily commit to that. But I think all of that was predicated on the fact, let's see what happens. This is the first meaningful step of, in improvement in over a decade. And I think it's, I think it has a lot of merit, particularly the pedestrian side of it. So I'm pretty excited that these changes will indeed make a difference.
And as Brian, as Emily stated, we're going to continue to meet. We're going to continue to evaluate. If we have to adjust something, we'll adjust it.
Thank you. Should we throw a commissioner in those meetings?
More than welcome to. Yeah, we'd love to have you.
I'll volunteer.
All right, we got one.
Maybe two.
Yeah. We have up to two. So if anyone else really wants to.
When we'd originally had the conversation, I was willing to do that as well. So that, that offer still stands.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other, go ahead.
I, I don't want to muddy the water. If you think it's best that we not be there, that's fine. But if you think it would be constructive, I'd be happy to be there.
I just worry because then we have a county commissioner, a city commissioner, and we're getting to the.
There's no, okay.
We'll, we'll, we'll let you, we'll let you keep moving forward like you have been and hopefully we'll continue to see great progress.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? This is just a report where there's no action on this item?
I like the creative approach. If nothing else, this, you know, should be a lesson to us all and exactly what can be accomplished when you put your minds to developing a, a quick plan. This, this is a blend of, you know, some old ideas with some new twists, you know, new focus on, you know, pedestrian traffic. You know, so on it, on its own, it represents a, you know, a great improvement. And again, there's, there's no problem we can't solve if we put the effort into solving said problem.
All right, I think that's all. Thank you so much for the update.
Thank you.
Yeah, continue the great work.
Sit down, Steve.
Okay, that moves us along to item number 16. This is continued discussion, 101 Broad Street Amendment to Plan Unit Development. Anne Reitz, Wally and Gertz.
So during your February 3rd meeting, you conducted a public hearing and closed it. The applicant, Wally and Gertz, is requesting an amendment to the planned unit development at 101 Broad Street to allow for two cargo containers, an expansion of outdoor seating, a display chair that you can take photos with, and then placement of a food or car, food truck during the summer months. It does require an amendment to the existing planned unit development. We heard comments. There were some concerns from the city commission to postpone the item until tonight's meeting to hear, get a report back on what can be done for the entrance into the facility and where we're at with that. You just heard that presentation. So the applicant is requesting approval of the request so they can move forward with improvements for this summer. They are here, if you have any questions, as part of the PUD. They do need some waivers for the Lake Bluff Scenic View Protection District. And those range from a nine foot, one inch to 11 foot, seven inches. And that's for the cargo containers, the chair, the truck. And then there's also two sunshades that fall into that category also. So they are here, if you have any questions for them. The planning commission did unanimously recommend approval of the request in their January 2nd meeting.
I have a question.
Thank you.
At the last meeting, a couple of residents expressed concern about the cargo containers. I just want to verify what I assume to be true. I've seen this type of style used in other places. They can look very attractive when they're, it's a newer container with a great, great paint on the outside. And, you know, they've got sections that open up, obviously, so you can service patrons. I think that's what you're talking about. That's kind of what the renditions suggested. I just want to make sure that we understand exactly what they're going to look like. There are some other, there's some other situations where, whether it's, you know, kayak storage or other things where there are containers around the city. Some of them look a little better than others. And I just, because it's so visible and it's on the beach, I just want to make sure we fully understand what that's going to look like.
We don't have a definite design yet, but it will be kind of colored and whatnot and bright that lends itself to the blue and gold that are already down. And I mean, the containers have come a long way in, in 20 years, where people did use just a container without the graphics or the paint or whatever. But the company that I work with, it's, it's a paint. Yeah, it's a brand new, the type of paint is non-corrosive and whatnot. So it'll be pleasing to the eye and it'll go with the theme down there. So it's not going to, I don't have the exact, but I've got it.
No, no, I assumed as such, I just wanted to verify.
Yeah.
And then it's going to have sections that open up, like a transom window kind of thing, right? For, for servicing.
We're going to have it as open as possible.
Okay.
Because the container's giving more flexibility to do what we're doing on the inside that we're out of room for. So water, merchandise, we can spread it out. So yeah, we're going to try to have both sides open so you can, customers can access it from either sides.
Okay. Thanks.
ADA approved as well, so someone with a wheelchair can wheel up and place an order. And, you know, I can't remember if you recommended, but we have like a little kind, not a ramp, but some kind of a path to the chair where they can take a photo op.
Okay.
They're in a wheelchair so they can get through the sand easily. So it'll all be, yeah, ADA accessible.
Okay.
Yeah, I saw that was a suggestion from somebody in the, in the minutes. So that's, that's nice that you're doing that, yeah.
Other questions?
Thanks, ma'am.
Okay. Well, we did a lot of talk about this at our last meeting and we had a lot of question and answers. So I guess if there's no further questions right now, what is the pleasure of the commission?
I moved to approve a third amendment to the 1997 Planned Unit Development located 101 Broad Street and located in the W. Water Recreation District requested by Anne Reitz, owner of Wally and Gertz, on behalf of Bering County. The property owner to allow one, expand the concession area with seating, two cargo containers, one food truck, photograph chair, and two obtain height waivers for the five grids from map 91 of the Lake Bluff Scenic View Protection District ranging from one inch to 11 and 7. And specifically listed in the staff memorandum based on the 12-page document prepared by Panel Area Construction Services found in January 2nd, 2025 Planning Commission Packet as it meets the required standards under section 1331, 1361, 1363 of the zoning ordinance.
I support. Any public comment on the matter? Please.
I just want to step back to the previous matter that has not been very transparent to the city. And it's not the merit of what the county and the city presented on the work group. It's the fact that it's not been transparent. And before you do anything further with that, that needs to be on the agenda and called out specifically because people in the city do not realize what you're about to try to do. And I don't know why we lack the transparency in this. I don't know what legalities this proposes, Lori, but this is not appropriate.
I'm not really sure what you're referring to, but I could.
About the previous presentation, I think the changes in the traffic down there, it's not about the merit of what they're presenting. It's about the fact that it wasn't transparent. And it didn't sound like it was real transparent to our commissioners that this is what's been going on. So tonight, people could have come to this meeting knowing, not know, they would have come to this meeting knowing that this was being changed and give them a chance to look at it. But this was not transparent at all. And all it said was a word in progress group. It did not call out on the agenda that this was what was being discussed tonight. So I'm sorry, I waited until they asked for the question. So it's not the merit what's been done. It's nothing to do with the other subject that you're talking about. It's that this changes that you're doing is not transparent. And people would have wanted to see this tonight. And I suggest that gets tabled before anything further so people can come in here and see what you're talking about.
From a legal perspective, there has been nothing that has been improper. The, the group has been meeting and reporting back to the commission. It's been on the agenda each time it happens. This item was on the agenda, the item before it was, the report was attached. From a legal perspective, everything.
Lori, I, I don't know why the city is not choosing to not be transparent. I'm not sure what's going on because this wasn't clear on the agenda that you were calling this out tonight. So we, we did have people that would have come here to see this presentation. So you're not being transparent.
Right, okay, thank you. Any other public comment on the matter? Please.
Back to the first comments, I'm sorry, I don't know your names, but nowhere in this discussion of rerouting traffic and everything that's being done, was there any mention of who is paying for this? There are costs involved. And I guess my backup question or the second question would be, who's consulted with Mother Nature? Because you're talking about building a sand berm. First wind that comes along is going to knock it down. There's got to be some sort of containment plan. And that costs money. The figure of a quarter of a million to take the boulevard out is, is not small money, small change. But there's got to be costs here too. And I haven't heard any discussion of what this is going to cost and who's footing the bill? The city, the county? Please explain.
Okay. And if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record?
I'm John on Derfrow and I live on Vale Court in St. Joseph.
Any other public comment? All right. What is the pleasure, go ahead.
Can commissioners make?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I just want to say in general, you know, city staff is employed for, commissioners are elected to find solutions. We know this has been a problem for two decades. There's been a lot of finger pointing. There's been a lot of anger. There's been a lot of ill will back and forth between the county and the city. We don't know if this is going to be an effective solution. We believe it is. Our job is to try to find solutions. And I have to compliment our staff and the county staff for coming to the table to try to find solutions. Along the way, although no commissioners have been in these meetings, we have been made aware of progress. Much of it has happened relatively recently, in the last week to 10 days. Much of it has happened relatively recently in the last week to ten days, but pretty fast moving. Regardless of what happens with an expanded concession stand or. Seating areas down below, Silver Beach is going to be a popular attraction. There's going to be a lot of congestion on the roads leading to it. It's a problem that we have to overcome regardless of what happens with this concession stand. And I applaud, like you said, the county and the city staff and this commission for diligently working to try to find a solution. None of us know if this is going to be effective. It certainly probably won't be perfect, but I feel it will be unquestionably better than anything that we've seen in the last decade. So I think we have to, we have to try to focus on that. It's about progress. It's about incremental progress and about improvement and solutions. I just want to make that case. That was what has factored into my thinking, my questions. My interaction with the staff over the last two or three weeks really intensely on this issue is trying to find a solution. So.
And to piggyback off of that, our meeting last time wasn't last month. It was earlier this month. We had a lot of. Questions about what's been going on and those questions have been researched and worked on extensively by this work group. And they were answered today with a presentation and we tabled it last time because we didn't have the answers we wanted. Today, we're making that decision. Based on those answers that we received. And I just want to repeat my comments from last meeting that I am also appreciative of all the work. That the, the city and county has done together. I've heard nothing but great things about. Things are moving really well now in this time. And I'm hearing nothing but positive comments about. The communication and the ability to work together. So that's what we want in a community and I'm happy to see those things. I'm making my decision based on what I think is legally appropriate. We have standards that we have to look at when making these decisions. And when I hear public safety say that some of the concerns I had with safety and resident safety. That they're not a concern for them, that makes me very happy to hear those things because I'm, I'm concerned about the, the public safety. So. With that, any other commission comments before we move to a vote?
I think I would echo that it is, it's encouraging to see a real plan on paper. I'd like, I'm ready to see it actually, actually come to fruition at this point. I think as commissioners, we do have a duty to represent the people who elected us and understanding what a. Challenging and difficult situation this has been for residents, for business owners of St. Joseph, who are also residents of the county. We. We need to be very, very careful about what, what other changes we allow.
All right, we had a movement. We had a second. Abby, call the roll. Commissioner Fernandez?
No.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Binkley?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorolla?
Yes.
Commissioner Ory?
No.
All right. Motion passes. And that moves us along to item number seventeen downtown parking program update and overview.
Thank you. Let me get the slides up and while Tim fixes the mic. Oh, I'm pushing the wrong button. While Tim fixes the mic, I'm gonna chat a little. So Kayla and Kelly are actually going to give this presentation. And it's an update on what we've been developing for the downtown parking program. When I say we, I am talking specifically about the parking subgroup, which has been working diligently on developing. What this downtown parking program could look like. As I'm sure folks remember, the downtown parking program has been proposed. To the City Commission twice back in June and October of twenty twenty four. Preliminary concepts shared in June of twenty twenty four and approved unanimously by the City Commission. Further refined concepts came back in October of twenty twenty four and were approved unanimous. At that time, twenty pay stations. Were also approved. Since that time, the parking subgroup, certainly with support from staff, have been working to look at. How to further refine this program based on the feedback that's been received from commissioners, residents, business owners, et cetera. And that is the update today that Kayla and Kelly will share. And then there are three additional agenda items related to the downtown parking program that will follow.
Thank you, Emily. And I apologize and appreciate your patience with me. I'm a little breathy. I'm eight months pregnant and also overcoming a cold tonight. So.
That's code for be, be real nice to her.
We can go ahead to the next slide, Emily.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No worries. So Emily covered this to an extent, but this is just kind of a recap of the history of our downtown paid parking program that we've been speaking about. Back in twenty sixteen, we had mentions of it in the city man, city master plan. We know congestion in downtown has been an issue for far longer than twenty sixteen. Twenty twenty, we went out, we did a survey of, we had about two thousand touch points, different varying people. Downtown residents, visitors, et cetera. And. In these two thousand touch points, the key issue that came up more than anything was congestion and parking within St. Joseph. And how can we move past that? Being kind of one of the big frustrations for us here. After that, downtown vision master plan was adopted. The D D A recommended then for a paid parking approach. Within that master plan, there are, you'll see kind of a wide variety of potential like. Solutions and opportunities for the city. Paid parking was one of those. And so the D D A moved forward then with. Following up on that recommendation and just exploring what that could look like. After that, a parking subgroup was created with three representatives from the D D A. Representatives from the commission and representatives from city staff as well. We hired Walker consultants because we knew that in order to do something like this correctly, especially such a, such a change for the city. You want to have someone who is an expert and who knows kind of what they're doing to help advise. Afterwards, the D D A came to the commission with a basic overview of a plan. The commission approved moving forward. And then later in September twenty twenty four, the commission approved the purchase of twenty pay stations for the paid parking program. So a big part of what Walker came to us with, we had them do a study. On what parking looks like in St. Joseph and what that utilization is. And what we found, you can see here, there's a lot of red on the left side of the map and a lot of more green on the right side of the map. And that tells us this was conducted on a mid-July Saturday, not a special event, but still during kind of our peak month, our busiest season. And only about sixty percent of total city parking is being utilized. And it's all being utilized over on the west side of Main Street. So closest to the beach, closest to the shops. That makes sense. So when you're thinking about parking, the goal is to have eighty, eighty-five percent capacity. So that translates to one available spot per block. So that if someone is coming to downtown, they want to go shopping. There's a spot that's available for them and they're not having to circle the block multiple times. So I think that covers that. Going on to the next slide. Some other challenges that were just identified in the study. We all know that parking downtown in the summer has been a frustration point for years. A lot of downtown parking in front of the shops, sometimes it's occupied by either beach, beachgoers or employees which can. Make access for people who want to patronize those shops more difficult. The two hour time limit, as we've discovered, is too short for a lot of visitors who want to spend their time. Cruising the shops downtown and maybe getting a coffee. We also know that Main Street is a barrier where it feels unsafe to cross. So that can kind of inhibit people from parking on the east side of Main Street as well. And then we know that our city infrastructure in downtown is in desperate need of some revitalization and some extra loving care. So thinking about our downtown parking program, then these are really our objectives. And we're building this program for our residents, for our businesses. So you can kind of see the benefits for traffic, for business locals, as well as visitors. So here, a downtown paid parking program would be able to help reduce the traffic congestion in downtown itself. When they've done studies before on just parking and paid parking in general, it turns out about one in three cars. In traffic is circling the block cruising for parking. And so if you can really motivate people to find parking a little quicker. Then you don't have as much traffic clogging up the streets. For businesses, you know, it's all about increasing turnover. Hopefully having less people who feel that they're going to park all day in the two hour spots and just kind of take the ticket. You know, so that more people can come in and out, more people can visit the businesses who want to be there. For locals, right now we all pay for our downtown parking. We just pay for it through our taxes. And so when you're thinking about paid parking, it's all about the people who are using that parking to pay for that parking and those improvements. And then for visitors as well as for us, it's about improving the experience of downtown. We have a lot of opportunity to take what makes St. Joseph special. And just make it even better to kind of revitalize and reinvest in that. And paid parking is one way to generate the revenue that allows us to do that. Couple other reasons.
Sorry.
They're just, they're just down below in green, you know, encouraging longer term parkers using lower demand locations. Encouraging the use of alternate modes of transportation, for example, riding a bike or carpooling. For business, you know, it's extending, extending the amount of time that people are. Allowed to shop downtown through raising from two hour parking to three hour parking. As well as maintaining quick spaces, thirty minute free spaces for people who just want to hop in and out real quick. For locals, we're also adjusting time limits seasonally, seasonally to reflect demand. So that it isn't a burden for our people on the off season. And then for visitors too, it's just about simplifying the system even more. So feedback has been a huge part of us as we've worked throughout the months to develop this program. We've had a lot of commission meetings where we've heard a lot of feedback. We had some meetings with some of our downtown businesses over the last few weeks. Really trying to take in and absorb what, how can we make this the best that we can for our residents and businesses? So here you'll see some examples listed out. When there were concerns that there's not enough parking downtown, our parking subgroup has worked pretty diligently to increase the number of spaces that are available for free. On the east side of Main Street. Additionally, we heard some concerns from our business owners that the season might be too long, being from May first to September thirtieth. That tourism doesn't really pick up until those next couple of weeks in May. And so we've decided to shorten to May fifteenth through September fifteenth so that hopefully we can, we can get more of that tourist traffic and not affect local business as much. Concerns that downtown residents without private parking, well, they have to pay for parking at their resident. So we're working to develop a waiver for current residents of downtown. Where if you live downtown, if you live in one of the condos, if you rely on the city for parking, you shouldn't have to pay. Additionally, concerns about potentially creating hardship for employees of downtown businesses. If someone has some mobility issues where they can't walk very far, in addition to having a financial hardship. That makes it difficult for them to pay for parking. We want to make sure that our employees still have access to parking spot availability without it becoming a hardship for them. So the city is also working on a waiver for employees as well. Concerns about confusion, just because it's a new system, not everybody knows it. We have. Downtown ambassador program that we're working on recommending, just some friendly faces that'll be out there in the street to kind of help people navigate both the app and the meters. Concerns about quick trips downtown. We also have worked to just ensure that people can increase or choose their time in smaller increments. And that it doesn't have to be that you pay for a full three hours downtown if you're only there for maybe an hour and a half. Just some more concessions or, or feedback that we've made. Concerns about multi-day visitors. If you're staying at the Boulevard Hotel, you don't want to have to wake up at eight thirty in the morning to renew your parking spot. So we have made sure that the app could accommodate multi-day visits. Also, the public library is a free public good. That's important that that maintains its free status and access. And so we've worked with the library to identify some spots to make sure that people can still park for free in front of the library. Additionally. So we know that this is a big change. And so a lot of questions we've heard have been around, what's the flexibility of the program? If things don't go as expected, are you going to be able to pivot and change? And one of the things you'll see is that we are going to propose adopting the details of the parking program in a resolution. That allows us to be able to make changes with just one commission meeting instead of via ordinance where it would take two, two approvals. And then ten days to enact. So if anything unexpected comes up and we need to adjust the price. Then we can do that easily. As well, you know, we're adding more bicycle parking to help with people who might not choose to take their cars downtown anymore. Okay, so our downtown parking program, how we're proposing it look for right now. So paid parking would be in effect from May fifteen through September fifteen. The rest of the year, parking downtown is going to be free. Paid parking is also going to only be in effect on the west side of Main Street closer to the beach. On the east side, parking is going to remain completely free. Again, paid parking only nine AM to nine PM overnight, anytime off of those hours, parking will be free. On-street parking would look like about two dollars an hour with a maximum time limit of three hours. And then lot parking would be about a dollar an hour. That's. That's all going to be all day parking. So that's a maximum of twelve dollars a day for anyone who's parking in the all-day lots. Total parking, so when you take a look at it, this is just kind of a map that lays out what parking looks like on each side of the streets. And this is all, by the way, within a ten-minute walk of State and Broad, which is where that yellow star is right there. So we have, as far as free parking goes, a hundred and nine, twenty-nine, three-hour spaces in front of businesses. We have, if you include some of the residential streets, we have about seven hundred. Free parking kind of in the area within ten minutes of downtown. Fifteen thirty-minute parking spaces and those line Main Street. So that's about eight hundred forty-eight total free parking spaces that are still available in downtown within a ten-minute walk of State and Broad. Paid parking, three hundred seventy-one three-hour parking spots. Four thirty-six all-day parking spots, eight hundred and seven total paid parking spots. So looking at these co-centric circles, the map in general is about ten minutes. The largest circle is a seven-minute walk. Then five minutes and then three minutes. And three minutes specifically is about the width of the Stevensville Meyer parking lot. How long it takes if you park like way out to get into the store. So the way this is going to work then in practicality and what our parking ambassadors are going to help us with is that there are two ways. You can pay to park or visitors can pay to park and they can either choose to use their mobile phone or they can pay via pay station. So the mobile phone, there's an app. It's the same app that we use for our city parks. So that hopefully like that's less like things to keep track of, that's less confusion. It also is great because you can save some time. You can save multiple car license plates in there. So that you don't have to take the time to punch in all the numbers every time you go downtown. Passport, the app also has the ability to read QR codes if you don't want to download the app itself. Or you can text a number and it'll send you to the payment webpage. And then the other way is you can always use a station to pay to. These are the same stations that are used in our parks. So they don't operate any differently. They'll be available about every half block. So they should be visible and easy to access in the area.
So while revenue is not the onus for doing this program, we know that there is going to be revenue generated. And in order to make sure it is reinvested back into the downtown area where parking is, you know, where the parking is going to be in effect. We've developed a parking benefits district. And so what that's going to do is allow that eighty percent of the revenue that's brought in will stay in the downtown in this district. And then twenty percent will go to the general fund. Do you want to go to the next slide? So this is just an example, none of the numbers are concrete, obviously. But if you look at that, one of the things, all the upfront and operating costs of this program will be paid from the program. So then that 80/20 split that I just mentioned, that will come off the net income. So there's no, you know, that everything is going to be paid for. All the estimated operating expenses, the expenses of the pay stations, that's all paid for first. And then we'll use the net income in the 80/20 split. As Kayla mentioned earlier, if you go back to the Downtown Vision Master Plan that was adopted in 2020, there's a lot of really neat things that we can do downtown. And some of this revenue can help do that. You know, just mentioned the streets and the infrastructure, our parking lots need some work. This money can go for that. Court Place Plaza, Pleasant Street Plaza, you know, upgrades to that, upgrading Lake Bluff Park. All these things that were mentioned in the Downtown Vision Master Plan can potentially be paid for by this revenue coming in. So, you know, that's one of the, one of the neat things about it with that 80%.
So that's the overview. Thank you, guys. And like we've done before with concepts, of course, happy to answer any questions. And but really, this will all be fleshed out and part of a resolution as Kayla spoke about. But just wanted to make sure that we've got your support on the direction that the parking subgroup has moved in.
Great job, you guys.
Yeah.
Yeah. I know, Emily, you gave me some context earlier and I appreciated the flexibility around this being resolution versus ordinance-based. We're trying something brand new and we, and we want to try new things, so I'm glad that we have that flexibility. So thank you guys for doing that.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and I think as part of the work group, I think the, the team's done a really good job of listening to all the feedback that we've gotten since the beginning of this whole process and really worked hard at figuring out what makes sense for our city and how to be flexible in that aspect. So thank you to the work group who's done all this pivoting on the, in each meeting, so.
And that will continue to happen.
Correct. Any questions? I think we do have an action item on this one, right? Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I just, the thing that I hear overwhelmingly from constituents, and it's a concern we've talked about before, the beginning of the presentation, I think the court was residents have been paying for parking through taxes. Now those that are using parking are paying for it. There's truth to that, but we're still paying, everybody's still paying the same amount of taxes. I think as a intermediary step to, to working towards whatever the parking program is going to look like down the road, I know we've talked about it, but I think we should still consider on one of the lots west of Main, not on-street diagonal parking, but one of the lots west of Main that residents can park for free. I don't know what the, the numbers would be with regard to how many spaces, but I think it's something we should consider. And I think it would be, I think the idea of paid parking downtown would be better received if that was something that we considered. You could explain to me again why that isn't the best idea.
Sure. I will also point out that Eric Haggert from Walker Consultants is here and should probably come towards the front so he can also answer that question. You know, this idea has been brought up a number of times. It has been discussed with our consultant and it has been discussed by the parking subgroup. And the ultimate recommendation has been to not go forward with that. I can speak from my perspective and then Eric can certainly speak more technically. I think that there are a few things. One is part of our challenge right now is that all of our parking is free. And so everyone wants to be in the exact same space, which is as close to their destination as possible. If there is a free lot for our residents, then it, it starts to sort of undermine the logic of the different levers that you can pull to, to utilize your parking in the best possible way, right? There's cost, there's length of time, and there's enforcement. And by adding this layer of cost, you can motivate people to use their choice to utilize more of our capacity. When you look at that map that shows the underutilization, it's because everyone's trying to go to the same place. So when you add in, sorry, I didn't think this would take this long to get to. So when you add in cost, you now have people who say, yep, I will pay $2 an hour to park exactly where I'm going. And you have some people who say, well, I want to get close. I don't want to go across Main Street and I'll pay a dollar an hour. And you have some people who will say, oh, I want to park for free. And they start to come over to this other side of Main Street and utilize all of this currently underutilized parking. If we were to introduce a parking lot that is for residents, that is the first place residents will go and it will inevitably fill up quickly. And the same feeling, I've spoken about it here a number of times. I drive down State Street when I come downtown and when I can't find a spot, I'm frustrated. And residents will continue to feel that same frustration when they come and they drive through the resident-only parking lot and can't find a spot because it will fill up first thing in the morning with downtown employees and other folks who come downtown regularly and there will never be enough for everyone. So I think that's a big component of it. Eric, that's, that's my two cents, but do you want to speak to it more?
I mean, I think you covered most of it. The biggest concern is there's just not enough space for all the residents, excuse me, in the city or even residents that are also downtown employees. So like Emily said, in all likelihood, downtown employees that are also residents will fill up that lot on any given day. And then the next resident that comes will not have a space. Then what do you do? Do you start doling out privilege to certain groups? Do you hold some spaces aside administratively? It becomes very difficult. There's also just more technically, administratively, how do you register residents? How do you make sure that they keep their registration updated? How do you make sure that residents or former residents are no longer using the privilege? Inevitably, with any program like this, there's some onus on the user to, if it's payment, make payment and make sure they register. But if it's residents, there's still going to be groups of residents that come downtown, assuming they have free parking, don't register, get a ticket, and then you have to deal with those complaints. So there's, in addition to what Emily mentioned, a bunch of other factors. But I do think the, just sort of mechanics of making the most out of the space that you do have so that you can use, for instance, spaces for office employees during the day, maybe restaurant patrons at night or bank customers during the day, downtown residents at night. That's sort of natural intersection of the different demand curves that we call them so that you get the most out of the space you have. So you don't need to do things like add parking, build above ground and those sorts of things.
Yeah, okay. Thank you for your answer. And not, not to be argumentative, but we already have a system in place where people register their plates. If you're a resident, we have parking lots that, that's the, that's the program probably follow. So that's already in place. With regard to employee parking in those lots, I mean, I, I think the suggestion that I would make is any free lot, any idea of a free lot west of Main isn't all pay park. It's like two hours max. But then it allows residents to have access to downtown west of Main without paying a fee. It's, it, it is, I think, a culture shock to a lot of people that have lived in this town for a long time. It's something that I've heard over and over and over again from constituents that there should at least be understanding, not, not everyone can park down there, but of course, not everybody in town wants to go downtown. But I think if we started with a lot and it had a two-hour maximum that, that accommodates some of the people's idea of how we can kind of ease into this pay park. That's just a thought I had, I wanted to share it. I think it's, again, something that I've heard time and time and time again from constituents.
Only thing I'll add is when I think of, you know, the parking, you know, the impact of this, I like to think about how this will fit into downtown St. Joseph, not just this summer, but five to 10 years from now. And what this, you know, enables us to do, we, you know, as has been stated several times, you know, the problem is everybody wants to park in the same spot. One of my favorite features of this is that it's, it creates incentive to move people west or to the east where we have plenty of space, you know, just look at the chart that's on the screen. We, we have the space and we want to drive more parkers over there where it is free. One of my favorite little features of this is the creation of that parking benefits district that will then enable us in a dedicated fashion to use the revenues from the, from the user-funded system to spit that back into the downtown and be able to, you know, we've had several comments tonight about the condition of the roads and the bricks. Take care of those, restore those. This becomes more possible with that. And even beyond that, five, 10 years from now, allowing us to invest in east of downtown to make that even more of a desirable place to park right now and put more into that part of downtown. It's, you know, everybody wants to be on the west side for a reason. It's great. It's not the only part of downtown though, right? We want to keep making what the west side better and also improve our east side of downtown. And I think this helps us go towards that end. And that, in my mind, is, is a benefit to all of our residents.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the commission? All right. What is the pleasure of the commission?
I move to approve the first reading of the ordinance to amend.
Not that one. Page. 167.
I move to approve the concepts as presented and direct staff to continue the implementation process.
I support. Any public comment on the matter? And, and again, please, if we could have up at the podium, name and address, and we got a three-minute timer as well.
My name is Jim Jesky. I've lived in St. Joe 79 years. I wrote Mayor Thomas a letter and talked to Mr. Fernandez. I think Mr. Searle is exactly right. People are annoyed about having to pay. I pay $6,000 of taxes and now if I want to go to the Whitcomb to see some old friend, I've got to pay to park. I, I walk, so it doesn't bother me. I can walk all over the place. It's, he's right. People would be happy if they could come downtown for an hour and go see somebody in the Whitcomb and not have to pay to park a car. This has never happened before. 79 years, there's nobody sitting up here that's lived here as long as I have. So I've seen all this happen. Gloria has been here forever. Now, if she worked at the dime store, she'd be spending money to park her car. It's just, I, you know, the bottom line is it's just not right. People that live in St. Joe, there's things that should be done to help people that live here. I have a guy that lives in Marion Springs and he likes to brag that he goes to the band concerts and say, did you eat in downtown? No, I'm not spending money. I go to the free band concert, but I pay taxes for the band, charge for the band. You're charging for parking, charge for the band. Consider the resident, you know, it's not all, people get annoyed with this tourism. I really get annoyed. It's like you don't even want to be downtown for three months. It's just too busy. It's, it's better than South Haven and it's better than New Buffalo. And it's like I told Mr. Fernandez, we got a great town here. It's a B+, let's make it an A. Let's be good to the residents, not the tourists, the residents. And it's always money, always, you got to look at money, always money. You ever hear that money is the root of all evil? I'm done talking.
Thank you.
Hi, Jessica Shagor, 403 State Street, Unit 4. And I'm a resident here. I live in a condo on, right here, one block down here. And we have three parking lots that us residents who live here have to put our vehicle in overnight. And I feel like with this problem, I feel like, aye, aye, aye! I'm banging my head against the wall telling you guys everything that you're telling us. Okay, the, you said today, the parking spots down at the beach, they fell up in, in three hours. We have employees that are parking on the all-day spots because where are they going to park? But, okay, so we're going to have free over here. Where are they going to start parking? So now, instead of playing the game too of paying to park or whatever, because a lot of the employees go out and they switch the parking spot every two hours. But all of this is going to funnel directly into that lot. Great. Now us who live here have to compete with all of those people in order to have a spot to park. And I'm going to say the first weekend in May, Ken and I are going to see his daughter graduate. So Friday at noon, I'm going to have to sit here with my flashers on, go round and round and round and round so I can park my car so we can take his for the weekend. I don't understand how we are addressing this. You are taking away so many all-day spots that you are not helping us out. Thank you.
Thank you.
I saw that chair jump out.
Emily, do we need to clarify that there is a waiver that we, in that proposal?
For residents.
For residents.
I don't think it was about the pay, though. I think it was about the capacity.
Okay.
I'm Jim Reamel. I live on 204 and 1/2 State Street. And I just want to say, I think this is a great idea with this paid parking. We've been working on this for, forever. We don't do anything. This town is famous for not doing anything. Every time we want to try to advance, stop. We're, we're back on 1970 here. That's how exactly we're living and nothing's changed. And you know, in my lifetime, I'd like to see this town developed. I mean, I'd like to see some vitality. I'd like to see people, I'd like to see people from all over the place. That's why we call it a town, you know? But no, we want to be insular. We don't want, we have, what is it, 11% kids live in this town? We're losing population. What's going to happen to our schools? Because we don't want to shut everybody out. We don't want, want to have anybody come in. We got to move forward. In my lifetime, I like to see us move forward. We spent nine years doing this thing and people don't show up. And now we're going to do it? Now we're becoming Saddlewood works. Let's stop. I'm, I'm really tired of it. It's time to move on, okay? Let's go forward. Let's have some forward-thinking people. Quit thinking about how it was in 1970 or 1960. Let's move forward. Things are changing and we have to change if we want to be a vibrant community. It's pretty darn simple. That's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Jim Kramer from Shoes and Tim's Two in the 505 building. Just a couple of concerns. The lot parking all day will be in the large lots that we have on that, that side of Main Street. And people can park there for 12 hours. It'll be cheaper for them to park there than it will be to go park at the county beach. My guess is they'll walk a little bit, walk to be able to do that if you have that all-day parking, I think, right? The county beach, you're going to park all day in the county lot. I'm not sure that cost. That was just one concern I've had, that we're still going to have all the beach folks fill up the lots right here. Secondly, the events during the summer, will the lots be blocked off for like the Crazl event and those things that were paid, are paid parking? Will all of that get blocked off and then you'll lose that revenue? Is there any free parking at all down on the beach side? Or the beaches down below the bluff? Any free parking down there? None at all? I'm not sure. I'm just asking that question. And I brought up several times about residents being able to pay for a parking pass like you would, instead of like going free to the, the beaches here, like the city beaches, we can get a pass. If we would be willing to pay for a parking pass and not go through all of the kiosk and all of that stuff. A lot of our folks that come into our restaurants are older folks and they don't use all of this stuff. And I think they will struggle with that. Those are the concerns I have. I have others, but that's enough.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm Deb Saylor. I own the Market Building. And although I'm not a resident of St. Joe, I assure you I pay lots of taxes to the city. the city of St. Joe. I am also on the parking subgroup. I have been a board member of St. Joe Today. I've been the chair of that board. I'm currently on the DDA, but I'm speaking mostly as a business owner. But I do feel like I have a lot of insight because I've been at a million meetings. But first and foremost, I've moved here 20 years ago. I have never, ever, ever, ever been to any meeting about anything pertaining to the city or an event happening down here. I have never been to a meeting, and I've been to a lot of meetings, where parking didn't percolate up as a huge issue. And while I personally disagree with the scope and scale of the issue, whatever, the perception is that there is no bigger problem in the city of St. Joe that has ever happened, ever, and will ever happen again. And so I would like to commend this commission and this city staff for finally, for the first time in 20 years, taking on an issue that is radioactive waste. There is never, ever going to be a solution that makes everyone happy. People are going to be big mad. Some people are going to be mad about it till they die. And so I just want to applaud you for being willing to make tough calls and listen to experts and listen to the community and listen to the business owners and listen to the residents, because it's juggling a lot of balls. You have to placate and appease a lot of very competitive interests. And so I, as a business owner, appreciate so much you're willing to put it out there and make maybe a hard choice or a hard decision. And just to respectfully disagree with the very nice gentleman who's lived here 79 years, I agree. Make this town the best for residents. They do pay taxes. But business owners, if you want a nice downtown, you have to have businesses that can succeed. And every business down here relies on tourists. So maybe you personally don't like it. I love when the downtown is busy and active and has festivals and... I bring my family here because it feels like a place I personally want to be. I get, not everyone agrees with that, but you need businesses, and those businesses need tourist dollars. And so you have to balance that. And my last comment is, when this first came up in the DDA as a thing, as a proposal, I, too, was very skeptical. I thought it was silly and nonsensical and a really bad idea. I sat at tens and hundreds of meetings, listening to experts and feedback, and I changed my mind. I feel like I was wrong. And my last comment to residents is, please don't get all your information on Facebook. Our two newest hires that have been staff that have been helping the DDA, their information, first of all, is accurate.
That's three minutes.
Use that. All these slides, I see people taking... They're all in the city agenda packet meeting. Use actual information when you're getting mad about it. If you think, oh, it's a couple of months of the year, it's not all year. Use the information they've put out there. They've done an amazing job, so thank you for that.
All right, that's three. Thank you. Other public comment?
My name is Brian Maynard. I own Forte Coffee. We have several locations, but one on State Street. I also serve on the DDA board, but I am here really as, you know, thinking about my business on State Street, the quarter of State Pleasant. You know, when I first opened down there, literally the minute I announced it, people just came out of the woodwork and said, "You have to work on the parking problem." And I said, "Well, let me get open," you know? So then, six months later, I said, "I don't really have a parking problem. I have a line out the door from Memorial Day to Labor Day, and people seem to be able to park somewhere. And the rest of the year, there's plenty of parking." So I also, like Deb, was a little skeptical. And then I read the reports from Walker. By the way, Walker's not, they don't get any revenue from this. We pay them, or the city pays them. They aren't getting a piece of the action. The DDA doesn't get it, you know? So this is all city money, and as we showed, that is going to stay downtown. One of the first comments this evening was how the roads were terrible. Well, those all cost money. And I agree. I would love to see them improved. So if we can relieve some funding somewhere else so that the precious city funds can go to the neighborhoods outside of downtown, a lot of downtown's going to be taken care of. So anyway, the other is that I oftentimes keep hearing the, "I don't like to come down in the summertime, but I don't want to pay to park, and so therefore I avoid it." Most of the people I know say, you know, "Give the tourists downtown for the summer. I'll take it." And the rest of the year, it's free. So nothing's going to change. It's only going to change for a short period of time. And guess what? Most of those spots today are not taken up by residents that are on the west side of Main Street. They're taken up by people going to the beach. And we love those people going to the beach, and they ought to pay up their fair share because they're coming in. Now they pay an entrance fee to get into the county, but they're not, unless they're buying something at one of our shops, and we appreciate that, of course, they're not paying any taxes in the city. So this is a way for them, it's a, you know, kind of a user tax, so that we can improve what we have downtown. So anyway, I'm a big fan of the idea. I also agree with the commentary that sometimes, you know, that we're afraid to move ahead. And, you know, I have a daughter that lives in Traverse City, and guess what? Traverse City's been charging to park downtown for 25 years, maybe 30, and many, many beach communities up the coast. Some haven't, but many, many have, and that hasn't slowed down traffic. I have not one iota of concern about losing business because somebody's going to have to pay for parking for about three months of the year. Thanks.
Thank you.
This thing's helpful. Yes.
How you doing? I'm Nardo from Nardo's Pizza at 505. I second what Kramer says. The only thing I would like to see is the change take effect on Labor Day, like you do the normal parking. And maybe end at five, like a lot of cities. Some from Royal Oak, we have paid parking. We end at five. Run it to nine o'clock. You do that if you have a nightclub or if there's some kind of nightlife in the city, which we really don't have here. So running it to nine o'clock might be a little bit too much. So five o'clock, start on Labor Day or Memorial Day like we normally do. I mean, I'm all good for the change. That's my only question, thing I got to say, so.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tom Galick. I live on Lyons Park Drive. I've been a, my wife and I have been full-time residents of St. Joseph for about 12 years. We've owned property in this town for about 15 years. We've been visiting this area for about 40 years. I have two little boys, and they had a lot of fun in this town and still do. I've been on the St. Joseph Downtown Development Authority Board for about four years, and I'm currently the chair of that board. I participated, like a lot of my colleagues, I've participated in, gosh, ad nauseam discussions about parking, meetings, discussions, presentations, all the rest. And so I feel overwhelmed, frankly, by all the discussion, but it's been excellent. And I think it's been pointed out by my colleagues. I think they've demonstrated that this has been a well-thought-out process. I'm a finance guy by trade, and my friends on the DDA board and my friends in the city get a chuckle out of that when I say that. But I've been in the finance area all my life, last 40 years, mainly as a chief financial officer for a variety of different companies. So when I look at things, frankly, I have to say, I look at them through a financial lens. That's just, it's been created in my DNA. So the most interesting part about this discussion, and the biggest revelation for me, has been where the city gets its money. And a lot of people have alluded to this, but the fact of the matter is, as a community, we don't have a lot of resources in terms of revenue. We just don't. If you look at the city budget for this year, over 60% of that number comes from real estate taxes, and that's just in the general fund. And then there's another 20% or so in fees and permits and all kinds of other things. So you're talking about over 80% of the money that is extracted from individuals mainly that live in this community as residents. These are through taxes primarily or through other fees and charges. Real estate taxes also support many of the other funds that run this city, the streets, the libraries, picking up the trash. And someone even mentioned the municipal ban. That's supported by real estate taxes as well. So the bottom line from my perspective is that the city has few places to go for revenue. That's the reality. And that's the reality for a lot of communities like ours, that there are not a lot of places to go to look for funds to support the activities that we know are important for our city. Paid parking, in my opinion, offers a potential solution to that. There's no question about it. So essentially, as I look at the situation, the idea of getting users to pay to support things that need to be done in this city, whether it's to repair roads, repair sidewalks, put in benches, work the lighting system, all of those things can be supported by visitors who come to our community. So as residents, and as a resident, I look at this as a math problem. I got two choices. I can either wait for my taxes to go up, because that's what's going to happen when Main Street, where we haven't done anything in...
Two, three minutes.
When we haven't done anything in eons, needs repairs, they're going to have to come to all of us. So my alternative is to do that or to pay a couple of bucks to park my car every once in a while when I go downtown in the summer, which frankly, I think, as a lot of people suggest, doesn't happen that often because frankly, it's very crowded, and that's a good thing. So my comment to the commission is, this is our time to act on this proposal. I think it's been well-thought-out. It's been well-researched. Everyone has done yeoman's work on putting this together, and I think this is the opportunity to do it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. I'm Sue Reimland. I'm also on the DDA, and I'm the resident rep on our committee. My husband mentioned earlier, we live right on State Street in Upper, so we're right in the heart of all of it. But I just wanted to bring us back to what Kayla was talking about when she brought us through those slides and she talked about the city's master vision plan. I'm looking at this from a big-picture perspective. I'm really excited about the investment that I see in the city from private investors. We own property downtown. We get calls a lot from people asking us what it's like to own property downtown, and there seems to be, in the last couple of years, a definite uptick in people wanting to spend money down here. So we believe in the vision of the master plan. We think that the city could be an A-plus, Mr. Jesper, as you so eloquently stated. I agree with you. I think it needs to be more pedestrian-friendly. I think aesthetics, and Tim, I was super happy to hear you mention that, especially add park and lake. No more orange traffic gates, aesthetics, right? But I think that that's what this parking plan does. You know, it turns over the spots. It eases congestion. It brings vitality. It looks better than, rather than people just sitting there and circling. And so, you know, are there going to be some issues? Maybe. But it also could work really, really great right out of the gate. We hire these experts who come in, and like, this is all this guy does, is parking. God bless you, you know? But so to think that, you know, I just see so much, especially in social media, that bothers me, you know, a lot of, what are those commissioners doing? We're residents, this, this... You know, this is going to be better for all of us, tourists, residents. We've got this huge MDOT project coming in 2027, which will change the complete trajectory of downtown. Look at that plan. It's going to be awesome when you get Main Street taken care of. That spills over into State. They're putting a traffic light at Ship and State. It's going to change how this whole picture looks downtown. So I'm in favor of the plan as you presented tonight. I know that you've put a lot of concessions into that plan that weren't there in the original, and I really appreciate that. So that's my comments for tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right, we had a motion. We had a second. Abby, call the roll.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Binkley?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorolla?
Yes.
Commissioner Ory?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
All right, that moves us on to item number 18, downtown parking program, the ordinance revisions.
So what you have before you is a draft ordinance amendment for parking. We currently have an ordinance in place, and a lot of what you'll see in the red line version are the changes that I've made. A lot of that actually had to do with just reorganizing some of the sections. The big changes really to the ordinance would be to change the framework for implementing parking regulations, so that requires city commission approval for the scope of those regulations, which would now be by resolution. The ordinance now actually allows the city manager to make a lot of those decisions, but that hasn't been done in practice, and that's not what we've really heard as being part of the proposal all along. So the commission would be making those decisions on rates and where the proposed parking regulations would take place, kind of the zones. And the proposal is to do that by resolution rather than putting all of those specifics in the ordinance itself. The ordinance does have fines that have always been in place. There was actually a request to increase those last summer-ish, and we delayed that because it seemed, it seemed to be a better plan to do that at the same time we were making other changes as well. So we delayed making those fines, changing those fines, and they have been increased to modernize, kind of make it more universal with what's going on in the surrounding area. The handicap parking fines, for example, were pretty low compared to what most areas do, the county being one of those. So we increased those fines, too. We also are giving people seven days rather than 72 hours to pay that initial fine. You know, 72 hours is pretty quick, so it gives them a full seven days, and it shortens... It doesn't shorten it. Eliminates one of the ranges for payments. So we have three time periods that fines would apply. Within seven days, it's the initial fine, and then eight to 30 days would be the second range, and then anything above 30 would be more. So it makes it a little bit more clear, both for paying your fine and for administration. And I think if you look at section 2938, in the ordinance, that is where most of the changes would take place. That allows the city commission to establish by resolution the spaces or zones where the parking on streets or in city-owned or city-operated off-street parking lots would be regulated by time limits, parking meters, or other controls. Allows you to establish that by a resolution. Again, the resolution could be changed in one meeting rather than what would be required to have an ordinance amendment, which is two separate readings and then a 10-day implementation period. And then it delegates more of the administrative functions to the city manager. I don't know if there are any particular questions. There's also a change to allow parking meters and to allow that by a more electronic method, different technology updates rather than just coins.
Thank you. All right. Any questions?
No. I like that it allows us to come back in and make changes as we need to.
In a faster fashion.
Yeah, right. And more control to the city commission. I like that aspect and that we can be more nimble as things pop up, so. All right.
I move to approve the first reading of the ordinance to amend Chapter 29, Article 2, Sections 29-21 through 29-45 of the City of St. Joseph Code of Ordinance as presented.
Support. Support. Do you know who got it? Mike, all right. Any public comment on the matter? All right, Abby, call the roll.
Commissioner Binkley?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorolla?
Yes.
Commissioner Ory?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Item number 19, we're still on parking, downtown parking program, but we are now on pay stations. Okay.
Thank you. So as you may recall, back in September, 20 of the Loop 2 pay stations were approved to go on. They're going to be on about every half block on street. And, oh, here we go. In looking at convenience and to kind of diminish confusion for people who want to park in lots, the subgroup is requesting 10 additional pay stations. These will be in the lots, the 10 lots downtown. So the map that you see on the left is kind of a perspective. So you can see the, see the red ones are the on-street ones and the green ones, I believe, are the pay, or the, I did that backwards. The green ones are the on-street and the red ones would be in the lot. So this is just going to help people that are new to the system as they're parking in a lot. They won't have to like go search for an on-street pay station. So the, in order to get these in time, we need to order them by May, March 1st. Excuse me, it's a two-month turnaround to get them shipped, installed, set up. So the cost of the 10 units is $100,500. And like I said, if we order them by March 1st, we'll have them in time for implementation.
And I would just add, you might remember that at the time that the previous pay stations were requested, there was a desire to reduce the number of pay stations and save money. And so you can see in this map that's being projected. The green is what's already approved. Please look at it with a slight grain of salt because the physical location might change a bit. The red are the lots that are now being requested. And then the yellow with the Xs are what we believe we can cut out from what was originally asked of the city commission.
Correct.
Yeah, to point out, it wasn't just economics, it was also aesthetics. We didn't want to overload
Right.
the downtown with this. It would be practical, practical but look good.
And I think that's what, kudos to Kayla, who put together this slide. Kayla was trying to show here, so you can see that sort of triangle of vision. And she has pointed out on the right side just where those pay stations actually would be. So even though it looks like a lot of dots on a map, she's trying to articulate that it's not going to look so heavy and sort of full of pay stations when you're actually walking through the downtown. They're still pretty well spread out and we will, again, still rely on the app as well.
The ROI calculation that was in here previously, was that before the 10 additional? Or would they factor that?
I believe that factors in the 10 additional. We were optimistic.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
No. I move to approve the purchase of 10 additional Loop 2 pay stations at a cost of $100,500 and authorize the city manager to execute the contract.
Support.
Any public comment on the matter? All right, Abby, call the roll.
Commissioner Sorolla?
Yes.
Commissioner Ory?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Binkley?
Yes.
All right, last thing on Downtown Parking Program is Passport. Again, all right, have at it.
Thank you for that. So in addition to the pay stations, the parking subgroup is recommending using the Passport system with all of the pay stations downtown, the new ones. As Kayla mentioned earlier, you'll be able to use the pay stations, but you can also use a QR code text to pay. So you can, a lot of, you can text a code and get the link to it. What's that? Yeah, for the app, yep. So Passport allows for payments using Visa, MasterCard, Discover and Amex, so all the major credit card systems. As it is now, the mobile app charges a minimal processing fee paid for by the patron. Customers will not pay at the pay station. They won't pay any transaction fees at the pay stations. Staff with the supportive walker negotiated a lower rate for this card processing. So right now, as it stands, it'll be 2.5% plus 20 cents per transaction with a merchant processing fee of seven cents per transaction. And that's down from 2.9% and 23 cents with that 7% payment on the gateway services. So this will just make it quite a bit simpler for everybody to have multiple options to pay. And this is just the city's portion of it.
Way to negotiate down from the original price. Any questions?
I move to approve the contract with Passport as presented.
I support.
Any public comment on the matter? Please.
The credit card fees are going to be passed on to the end user?
On the app.
On the app. So you pay more if you pay on the app versus at the station?
Correct.
Okay.
That's correct. And that's, we're building off of the contract that we currently have with Passport for our parks. And that's the model that's in place currently as well. Yeah.
Any other public comments? All right, Abby, call the roll.
Commissioner Ory?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Binkley?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorolla?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item number 21, Botham Avenue Reconstruction Project MDOT Contract.
I have three slide PowerPoint that Emily's calling up right now.
I need a little elevator music.
I know. Would you?
Okay, so city staff has two requests tonight for the Botham Avenue. First, we're asking to approve a budget amendment. The engineer's estimate was about 9% below what the low bid came in at, which is not unusual for what construction climate these days. And we're also asking to approve the MDOT Agreement Resolution. Again, that's pretty standard for these projects. We have to do that in order to be eligible for the Surface Transportation Block Grant Funding. A little background on this, the commission has seen this before, but it's for reconstruction of Botham Avenue from South State Street to Niles Avenue. We will be putting a non-motorized path in on the south side of the street. Our master plan calls for that. Again, it's a requirement for complete streets policy. Again, the STBG funding thing, there are strings attached to that. We'll also replace the water main. We're going to upsize six-inch water main to 12-inch water main. That'll be done mostly by open cut. But under Niles Avenue, we have to do a jack and bore similar to what we did on Upton Drive under the railroad tracks. As far as the project schedule goes, we have a construction window. So basically it can be done anywhere, anytime between March and October. However, once the contractor starts, the 45 working days to complete it. So about nine weeks to get the, the project done. I'll go to the next slide, please. Okay, so this just shows the summary of the bid tab. This was bid through the MDOT letting process. Again, that's a requirement of how the STBG funding is handled. Hoffman Brothers is a low contractor. They haven't worked in the city much, but they actually reconstructed Botham Avenue on the east side of Niles Avenue in 2015. They're solid, they're out of the Kalamazoo area. When I was in consulting, I worked with them multiple times. So they're kind of the Kalin of that area. So feel good about that. As far as a budget amendment goes, we're asking to transfer 168,000 additional dollars from the Street Improvement Fund. That's a city street improvement fund that we collect with our taxes over to the 203 Local Street Fund. That's partially subsidized by the state Act 51 money. We did have a budget amendments for 590 Fund, the sewer fund, 592, the city water fund. Those are handled in the consent agenda. We, Ben and I worked on those and did those funds as a whole just to take care of where we are today in, in the city budget process. So finally, the second request is to pass a resolution. So we're asking the commission to authorize two representatives from the city to sign that. That has typically always been the city manager and the city clerk. The agreement that's in the packet is the standard boilerplate MDOT language. It's pretty restrictive, but we pretty much have to accept it in order to get the 650-some thousand dollars in grant funding. Are there any questions?
No.
Yep. No, just to point out how expensive it really is to do things like this in our city. And that's why we need extra funds.
Yeah.
Right. Okay.
I move to approve a budget amendment to increase city street improvement funding from 212,500 to 380,500 for the Botham Avenue Reconstruction Project and approve a resolution for MDOT Contract 24-5533 to be eligible for Surface Transportation Block Grant Funding for the same project and authorize city manager Hackworth and city clerk Bishop to sign the agreement on behalf of the city.
Support.
I support.
Just got that one. Any public comment on the matter? All right, Abby, call the roll.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Binkley?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorolla?
Yes.
Commissioner Ory?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is going to be the 2025 Movies in the Park.
All right, good evening. So the ever-popular Movies in the Park will be hopefully returning for 2025. Tonight, we asked for the commission's approval of a letter of agreement with TPC Technologies to provide screen services, which include rental and setup of their large LED screen for the following dates, July 12th, 26th, August 2nd, August 9th, August 16th, August 23rd and August 30th. You'll note that the screen, that we left off July 19th, the screen was not available. And that's why we added in the August 30th date, which is Labor Day weekend. That has actually been the case for probably the last three summers. That date has not been available and we've done it Labor Day weekend and it has worked very well for us. Additional expenses for the Movies in the Park, in addition to the screen, are the fees for the movies from Swank Motion Pictures, which is estimated to be approximately $4,000. If approved, the expense would be included in the 2025, 2026 budget for the city commission's approval. As you can see, the list of movies below, we'll be using two parks. We'll rotate between Milton Park and Whirlpool Centennial Park. All the movies will begin at 7:30. If there is inclement weather, instead of just canceling the movie, we'll show it in a drive-in movie format at the parking lot at the John and Dee Dee Howard Ice Arena. The drive-in movie format is essentially, they'll give you like a, a radio station number. You'll tune into that and you'll be able to get the audio of the movie through your, the radio in your vehicle. Any questions?
I just want to point out that each one of these movies are eight and nine-year-old approved. They are excellent choices. So thank you, Greg, for, you know, the plan to put this on for the families of the city.
Yes. Do we ever take attendance at these things? I'm just curious if, if we have an idea of how well attended they're.
I wouldn't say we take attendance, but I mean, we kind of gauge just by looking at the crowd. It, it varies. Whirlpool Centennial Park naturally is much better attended because of the location.
Sure.
People just walking by and like, oh, a movie, we'll, we'll stop and watch. That said, we've had some outstanding attendance at some of the Milton Park movies and you wouldn't, you wouldn't know it based on the cars in the area because just people are walking in from all different directions, which is, which is great to see if you're there. You know, my family, we like to go to the Milton Park movies because we can just, we can walk over there, ride our bikes over there and go home. So it's, Whirlpool Centennial is definitely more well-attended, I'd say, over probably, Whirlpool Centennial probably averages around 200 people, movie. And then Milton varies in that 150 to 200 range depending.
Great. I just had no idea. I just.
You don't go?
No.
Yeah, I would say I, I love the, I love that we do it at Milton Park too. We talk about making our city accessible for tourists and for residents. I live on State and Winchester, so that is, that's my backyard for that one. I'm really excited about School of Rock too.
All right, well, what is the pleasure of the commission?
I move to approve as part of the agenda, no, the letter of agreement with TPC Technologies Inc. to provide services for the 2025 Movies in the Park as submitted for a fee of $13,160 and to authorize city manager to sign the agreement.
I'm not allowed to go home unless I support this, and I do.
Any public comment on the matter? All right, Abby, call the roll.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Binkley?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorolla?
Yes.
Commissioner Ory?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, item number 23, Housing Commission Deficit Elimination Plan.
Okay. But before we get going, I want to thank Jeff Schwartz from the state Department of Treasury. He was a big help when we worked through all this issue. To end the year last year, the housing commission had a deficit. And what that means is their current assets were less than their current liabilities. And because they are discreetly presenting component units, there's a certain threshold and I included in the packet the, on 2016 letter or notice from the state. They failed a particular step on, on that requirement. And so that led to two issues, one problem, two issues. The first one is we have to file a deficit elimination plan with the state within 30 days of the date of the notice. And if we don't do that, they will withhold a portion of the revenue sharing. On Tuesday, last Tuesday, the housing commission passed the plan on, from their side. And that's included in the packet. They've also, in doing so, committed to monthly updates to the city commission. So we'll provide those. And because they are discreetly presenting component units, it's up to the city to actually pass this plan, give it to the state. We have to have, submit it to state and have it evaluated and approved within those 30 days. So that's the first step. Then the second issue was when I filed the qualifying statement, I didn't check a box indicating that there was a deficit. Because that happened, we can't issue new debt this current fiscal year without prior approval. Right now, where it was called a short form approval with the state to issue debt. So what that means is before we can do that, we have to get state approval. And a result of that is going to add some additional cost. So it's going to add some additional time. Our financial consultants estimate it's two or three weeks if we were to issue debt because we have to file additional procedures with the state. So that, there's no action needed for that portion. That's just where we are now. But the deficit elimination plan does need approval.
Do you have any idea what the additional costs would be? Or is that something that you don't find out?
It depends on what we're going to issue debt for and how complicated that would be.
Okay.
Because when we do that, a portion, or the cost associated with the percentage of the debt and it's taken off the top. So we, I don't know what we'd be planning, but it would be a component of that. And I should say, for that, the qualifying statement portion is a two-year process because we're in it now. The next filing will be reviewed and then after that, if it's cleared, we're, we're going to clear.
Okay, any questions?
No.
All right, what's the pleasure of the commission?
I move to approve the proposed, I expect, resolution to approve deficit elimination plan for the St. Joseph Housing Commission.
Support.
Any public comment on the matter? All right, Abby, call the roll.
Commissioner Binkley?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorolla?
Yes.
Commissioner Ory?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
All right, that is it for new business. We now move on to city comments, city manager comments.
Oh, I am probably talked out for tonight. I want to share my appreciation for the county. We really have had a great partnership over the last three to six weeks, in particular, longer as well, but certainly over the last few weeks working through this. And to the city staff that's been working on it as well. Sometimes when I throw out ideas, I think they're all going to say I'm crazy, but they haven't. And we've really rolled up our sleeves and been creative. And I appreciate that in any team members and partnerships. And so just appreciate everyone. And then I guess the last thing I'll say is the parking subgroup has worked so hard. I know they've all alluded to it tonight, but such incredible dedication from the parking subgroup in moving this forward. So just great appreciation for that group as well.
Okay, thank you. Now on to city commission comments.
Oh, just a quick shout out to Public Works. As I was walking around, you, you know, they put up the lights and they get a lot of praise for that. But as I'm walking around today and they're taking them down, I'm thinking, that is one big job.
Other comments?
I think this just feels like the type of night, based on everything we've talked about, to just touch on, you know, an existential you know, an existential crisis, in my opinion, that, you know, is is facing our city, and and that's population decline and stagnation. You know, the reality is we're a city of just under eight thousand, you know, and we used to be much bigger. Just look at old historical numbers, and we still have the infrastructure to support that, and if anybody that, you know, knows where I'm going with this, it's expensive to maintain, you know, that. And so our solution, you know, we are in dire need of housing in this city. We are in need of new families and new residents of all types to fill our, you know, city and bring more stimulation to our economy and give us more things to do. We need help if we are to redevelop our physical streets. You know, the buildings that we, the homes that you and I live in are only going to get older, and we need to have the flexibility with ordinances that are friendly to our residents and to our businesses to quickly do the things that they need to not just get by, but improve their properties, which will bring new things to our city. It's it's time to get over some of the paralysis through analysis that we have fallen victim to for a long time in many cases and move forward, and that's all I wanted to close on.
Great. Anyone else? I guess the, I'd like to touch on events. We had ICE Fest recently, right, Paul? How did that go?
Great success. It was a cold weekend.
Very good, which is what we want.
I've stayed a long time.
And March Mannequins, one of my favorite events, is coming up on March seventh, I believe, so everyone make sure to get there. Anything else that I missed coming up important?
Spring Artisan Fair, which is on March eighth, which is the day after March Mannequins, so we got a full weekend coming up in two weekends.
All right, well, everyone spread the word and be there. Now we will move into a request for closed session. We actually have to make that request.
That's right.
Right, yep. It would just request the commission hold a closed session for the purpose of consulting with me and attorney Thomas Bendit regarding trial or settlement strategy, strategy in connection with some pending litigation that's been filed in the Berry County Trial Court. For the reason that an open meeting would have a detrimental financial effect on the litigating or settlement position of the city pursuant to the
Okay, great. What is the pleasure of the commission?
I move to enter a closed session.
There's a whole, whole thing to be read.
I moved at the St. Joseph City Commission going to closed session with its attorney Laurie Schmidt and Thomas Bendit for the purpose of consultation regarding trial or settlement strategy in connection with the pending litigation filed in Berry County Trial Court, case number twenty-four dash zero one one seven dash NF. For the reason that the open media, this is what we just read, isn't it?
Yes.
Do I need to read that again? Sorry.
Support.
What Laurie said.
Any public comment on the matter?
Apparently, there's plenty.
Abby, call the roll.
Commissioner Sorolla?
Yes.
Commissioner Ory?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Binkley?
Yes.
Yes.